All right, it's our motion to come out of executive session. Mr. Crowell, second on the sound. Any discussion? I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect, no action taken. Where are we, Mr. Schley?
We're now ready to take up the work meeting agenda.
Boy, he's just pushing it today.
For a short agenda, it sure went long.
I believe that would be after a follow-up under public comment, would it not?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
All right, I think Ms. Amy is here for public comment, is that Ms. Amy?
No, sir. She's here to meet with me after we get there.
All right, so we don't have that. Anybody else, public comment?
Came early. Nice to have y'all.
Was that my?
Would any of y'all like to speak?
I don't have anything to say.
We're gearing up for Monday.
Okay, all right.
All right, Ms. Martin, you're up. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Schley, quarter turn.
No, sir, I don't have anything under the work session.
All right, Ms. Martin, your turn then.
Made it to the big game, big league.
Okay, we just, first item, authority to purchase five used 2016, one used 2017, four police interceptive utility for a total in amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from the Missouri Highway Patrol for the Sheriff's Department from the fiscal year 2019 budget funds.
Second. Motion, Mr. Crowell, second, Ms. Morrison, any discussion? All favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Do your agendas, gentlemen. I thought, Mr. Schley, don't we reappoint everybody on the sound? We don't? Mr. Spire, you want to get ready too? Any questions on the agendas? I guess nothing, no questions. All right, Mr. Harrison, under additional business, you're up.
Yeah, when I first read that, I was like, one hundred and seventeen thousand for one vehicle? Oh, my gosh.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, got a couple things I want to go over this morning. Uh, first, we don't need no approval on them. We'll just kind of let you know what's going on with it. Uh, talked to Craig and Bridget for what tried to do. Mine's probably off.
Mike's, Mike's not on.
I turned mine off and it quit, so we'll just leave mine on.
It's starting back again.
That little switch up there while operating. You gotta turn this one on, Jessica.
But anyway, uh, what we want to try to do is, uh, we want to go through a fifteen work day on our POs on contractors, gets to our work. Uh, we're talking about this in a little bit, how lengthy our contractors have gotten on this. What we do is weather days, so basically overlay will be forty-five and rising.
Maybe one minute.
Be forty-five degrees and rising. We'll just give you an example of what it would have to be, and you know, not raining out there like it is right now, or it's counted as work day.
I'd say we just shut it all off, deer hunt, rest of the year.
I'm good at that thing. But anyway, uh...
Besides campaign, that is.
And anyway, we're trying to push our POs back to fifteen day, then we go to our second, we'll email, ask them, can they do it in fifteen work day? They'll respond yes or no. If they can't, then we'll move to the third.
What are you talking, covering on what all? I mean, what's this called, covering?
Mainly them, imagine it in place.
Yes, in place. Any of our contract work that's, that's out there, contractors.
It's mostly asphalt.
Because my goodness, I think our concrete.
Well, striping. Who you gonna fall back on?
I got two bids on striping.
Well, we've been using them, but we got...
We just got them.
Huh? We hadn't said two bids.
I know, well, see, we just got two bids. The other ones are backed up for four months.
I know. So, I mean, the roads aren't being done now.
Yeah. Well, this should, I mean, this is why you're bringing this to us, so we can move from that first one to the second one after fifteen days or whatever. Anytime after that, you can call that.
I'm just letting y'all know, so if somebody tells y'all and says, hey, I got...
Is this something we're gonna set in place for the next bid, or are we doing it for right now?
We're handling it just by way, by virtue of the way we issue the POs. This is information for you guys only. We're not intending to put it in the bids.
Okay.
It's just so y'all know that if you get feedback, blowback from vendors, y'all aren't giving me any time. You'll understand what the process is.
So, we don't have to put that in the bid?
Shouldn't they have known that, though?
We issue the PO and it says, ye shall within fifteen days.
Okay.
Okay? Y'all are just being advised that. Y'all, you probably are gonna get some calls.
Yeah.
From some that we know specifically are gonna say, y'all are hard timing me, I gave y'all a good price, and you're not giving me enough to get the work done. I need more than fifteen.
Yeah.
That is, that is the only thing, I think, that may come back to bite us down the road, is that you gonna have...
Next time around, the prices go up.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, they're gonna probably go up next time around.
Well, I hope, I mean, I hope that our road manager is savvy enough that he understands that out of those fifteen days, ten of them were raining, and the guy's three quarters away finished, and I, I don't think that he's gonna cut his nose off despite his face when it's gonna make us way longer if we...
No, but what's gonna, you know what's gonna happen. They're gonna say, no, we had more rain. We had, we couldn't get to it.
But still, but still, Mike's got that call, that he feels like...
I'm just making a comment. I'm not saying this something.
We, I mean, I, I've got a road that's way overdue.
Is that something we need to vote on?
No. And, and I think that there may be some days back in the summer, they could have worked, but I'm not the general contractor.
Yeah.
And now we're into what, the second wettest year in the history of Mississippi.
Yeah.
And, uh, these, uh, they face a lot of things that we don't see also, so I, I'd like to give Mike the latitude to meet with him and discuss that. He don't have to pull the trigger at fifteen days, but if they're just not showing up.
Yeah, right. So, you're right, we've got some, I mean, can't anybody do anything now.
I mean, we can't get our work planned, we're gonna get done.
The problem's not right now. The problem's build the summer.
Well, that's right. I mean, we can't, right now, we can't pay, we're struggling with the weather conditions and all that, but when we get ready, everybody else is ready.
How much, and then, then the two, the next one, I think, will weigh the factor of how much higher he was than the first one.
Yes, sir.
And the third one.
Yeah, there'll be a reason why there's some option two to not give most...
Bridget here?
Yes, she, she's not in here, but she's in the office.
I mean, in the building, is here in this room.
No, she, but I saw her back there.
Probably a good thing.
We actually talked about this, we got, we got the signature word.
Okay, all right. I'm not disagreeing with you, Mike.
On what type of work?
I'm with you. I'm all with you.
All of asphalt, striping, concrete?
Huh?
Asphalt, striping.
Concrete?
Well, well, you can't do anything about, about the striping. I mean, do anything about it with the rain, the weather. Yeah.
You're doing an excellent job.
Then, uh, wanna go into something else. We just got to talk about, we talked about the four, uh, striping trucks. Uh, if we're gonna go that way, we do need to pull the trigger on this, because I'm adding advertising next month, muddy, for some dump trucks. Uh, if we're gonna do it, we need to pull the trigger. If we're not...
You mean, do, if we're gonna do this, we're not gonna do a dump truck? What you saying?
No, we're gonna get the dump trucks. We might do a bunch of amendments for this right here.
I'm saying, Mike, well, man, something's gotta give. You know, we can't keep adding. We gotta take it somewhere, you know. I love you, man, but you know.
I respect, we disagree because it, uh...
Well, I've been trying to get the work done out here.
It, you know, I get a lot of feedback from my senior citizens out in the county who depend on that striping to, to get them home in the evenings and...
Dude, I've been trying to get Burnham Road done for a year, so I, I feel you, you know, but...
Well, well, you're saying maybe we need to cut back the dump truck?
I just know that I've talked with our accounting department, and I know how much over budget we are in our purchases. And, you know, our capital outlay has far exceeded than what we had generally started.
How much you talking?
It's gonna be in that one seventy is to two hundred. I'm, I'm throwing that number out.
And we need crews to run it and material to operate it.
Material operate, that's correct.
I, I mean, I like the idea. I do, man, but...
Well, I'm saying, do you need to cut back something to get, take something?
Right, we need to give up something. You have ideas?
We got weird.
I'm running twelve, thirteen-year-old trucks, and we're spending two or three thousand dollars.
Wait a minute now, come on, we buy new trucks.
No, I'm buying short trucks. I'm trying to reflect some twelve and thirteen-year-old short trucks we run there.
Oh, you're gonna try to go twelve years rather than every four?
We got some twelve-year-old short trucks.
Bob trucks, single axles.
We're trying to reflect.
Okay.
They said they're twelve years old.
And we, this isn't being money fixed.
Man, I thought every fixed equipment we had, that we had set up on a buyback, you know, that we operated cheaper, uh...
Some of the newer big trucks, newer Tandems, I think. Can I write it?
We only, we only do a certain, we only do a certain amount unless it gets above my head. I picture our company with one of them, with Laura.
Yeah, with Laura ain't hearing that going.
Well, we can only, we can only do a lease purchase on certain amount of equipment a year.
Yeah.
And certain amount we have to buy. Usually the short trucks, we've been doing a, we've been buying them outright, so we get wrong with them, they get the order there.
I got some more.
Okay. Well, what do we lease purchase in there?
We lease purchase in our big dump trucks. That's our big ticket item. We're trying to do our big ticket items on lease purchase, uh, stuff that, I mean, we can...
Well, look, man, I also know you got some other things coming in the hopper you own.
Correct.
So, I mean...
I don't think. I'm just asking y'all which one...
What's more important to you, a, a striped truck or a, a new, uh, machine? I don't think neither one of them was budgeted.
I don't think so.
What kind of machine? What kind of machine you talking about?
That machine was budgeted.
That, that machine is budgeted.
The, 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 uh, chip seal, the new chip seal machine.
Well, we just gonna have to, we gonna run into, I mean, yeah, I would like to change it out this year, Jay, but we ain't got time to do all that. I mean, with this reverse bidding, we kinda on the crux line on this deal right now. I mean, it'll take us, if we get authority to do even the dump truck, we're gonna be pushed on time. Like, get everything in here by October right now.
There was something, you told me it was like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars the other day.
We were gonna try to get another chip seal machine, whether it's fine or not, but it's, uh, we just...
No, it was something else. I can't remember that we might, uh, I can't remember off the top of my head. All right.
Well, the asphalt, the striker, was, was it not budgeted?
Striker was not, no.
What was it? Mill machine, that's what I'm thinking.
Mill machine.
Well, it's, I mean, the striping machine is a whole lot more sensitive to rural areas, because you got county roads that are dark, there's no lights, and people drive a long way on them. I mean, you may have one that's five or six, eight miles long, and not have a car come to you. So, it's a whole lot more sensitive than it would be for area like Jay has. And he does, I mean, I understand he's got a road called Burnham that needs striping too.
But it's just like three times the traffic yours does in a week, you know, but just saying.
But there's more light, and there's more lighting on Burnham, but...
I doubt that Burnham has three times more than Holly Bush does right now. I...
You're true. You're right.
But the kicker is, is it's just not, the private market's not addressing the problem. There's two people out there that strike, and they stay backed up with Hollywood Department job, and we can't get them.
Yeah, the, the equipment we're looking to buy, you know, for the state aid, uh, it has to be that reflective material. With this machine, they ever do that?
We're not doing that one.
This is just paint, I think.
It's paint. Well, I mean, if we can't go whole hog, then...
You're not, you can't afford to go whole hog.
I think, I think, uh, last week, what this been, Jake, uh, the summer flashing machines.
Oh, yeah. Is it what?
Eight hundred thousand. That's where you don't have many people doing it, Jake.
I did not have to do that one. I know you brought this up with our, uh...
Well, I, to me, it's a Mike kind of solution, what he needs the most, or where he could use his money and, and men the best.
And we talked about this, uh, yesterday, me and Craig did, and, uh, you know, I mean, if we do get this, then we're not budgeting for it. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to face ourselves until we do get up our budget for next year. I mean, because the paint, you know, I mean, the cost of it, depends on how thick you put it down. It can vary in a lot of different scenarios with...
What kind of cost is involved in, in that stuff?
My stuff runs about thirty dollars by a gallon, but...
What's the figure then? What's the figure a mile or so much to say roughly to put a stripe down? And I mean, so we kinda...
It's usually, I think, a mile, uh, twenty cent a mile, twenty, twenty-five cents a mile, one white. So, if you do a double yellow, it's gonna be double.
It's white, white on side, yeah, so it's a whole time.
I, I mean, I'm saying, pretty much on my county roads that's really rural, I like, I mean, we can just get a white line down the edges of these rural area roads.
Why don't we just get some prisoners out there, some paintbrushes?
Oh, my God.
Why, why are we allowing Jay in this conversation? Is the question, that, uh, do we have, do we have three votes to make this work?
We let him go early. You fed, you fed this monster. You let him go early, and it's just been harrowing after that.
Can we do this? It's, I mean, we'd have, we would have to buy this, or put it in right now to have it, even in time to use it this year.
To get it in by the end of the year. But we won't probably get very little use out of it this year.
Can we, do we have to make this, I mean...
Unless it's in stock, right? We're going to stop those days, but...
I mean, it's a good possibility that Jay will not be reelected, so... That, that was a joke, Jake. Jay's been here the longest.
So, one thing I would advise you guys, uh, is depending on when you guys decide we're gonna do this, we will likely be in an election year. So, when you make, expended your decision, is that gonna impact you? Uh, so, the decision, really, my advice is that this decision be made well before the end of May, next year. I, I don't see you guys making non-budgeted significant equipment spending.
I just say you got a little order, you bought it, you're trying to...
I wanna know what your needs are.
Well, that's all a moot point, if the election be decided by telling you something.
Well, that ain't happening.
If you tell me you got a order.
I mean, that's what we're talking about.
I would love that to happen, but we just don't have the resources for that to go, so...
I agree with you.
So, if we can't get more manpower, what is it, you're gonna buy this machine?
Well, that's, that's what I was talking to Craig, like, so you don't gonna be able to run certain things to...
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, I mean, I think you got...
You like to put down your construction crew?
Give us an example, construction crew, uh, train guys put on.
Yeah.
We're gonna run it for a couple days.
Hold another crew.
But he's not gonna let us run it five days a week.
Yeah.
And pay the whole cap. I mean, we even talked about yesterday, I mean, we don't paint the planted subdivisions. We're not gonna, we're not gonna start painting planted subdivisions, because that's gonna increase your cost.
They most times don't want it.
Well, most...
Oh, yeah, they do too.
But sometimes they do, but...
Planted subdivision?
Heck, yeah, they do.
I had a plan, I want that, because it makes it like a street highway.
You know, uh, we'd like to try it too.
They want a center line, you know.
But this is basically...
They supposed to be going slow.
This is gonna be what I call a re-striping machine. You know, we're gonna go, be re-striping old roads that need re-striping.
Now, how long you think that's gonna hold up for? Uh, Daniel's gonna start saying, I got that planted subdivision's gotta be done.
County uses, we will rent it to them.
All right.
I mean, come on, you know, before they, they know you got it. They're gonna be saying, oh, how come? You got a machine. So, it's gonna, that, that won't ever hold up.
We can look at it, and we can wait till, see if we can work this in the budget next year.
I would say, let's look at it in May and see if we can plan for it to be in the budget next year, and if, if it looks favorable.
After the election.
Right, well, it's... That's August. But he can, I mean, he can give us, you know, his ideas about other things that may have come to fruition between now and then. And we, I mean, we're only gonna lose maybe a month of using it if we...
Well, you're not getting use out of it anyway.
I swear, he said we could maybe get some right at the end of the year if we...
One of them can start a business?
The what?
Robert Robinson.
What happened to his equipment? Why don't we buy it? And then we could do it all.
He never had nothing but paint for it anymore.
He couldn't do the reflective stripes.
Oh, you said paint?
Seems like the...
I just, I was just letting y'all put your words...
Seems like the consensus of the board, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, consensus of the board is to wait, and at least, maybe at least until May, and for, for budgeting purposes, to work towards that. Is that kind of what I'm feeling here?
I'm, I'm, I'm calling, we're not gonna lose any actual use. I'd say let's, and Jay is very against it. I'd say let's wait until maybe...
I mean, I'd love to see it, but, uh, I don't know. Like I said, we're not getting use out of it now, really, anyway.
Hopefully by then, I mean, I'll be looking at a couple different rigs and having a little better idea. I mean, nobody's running one right now.
Maybe find us one of them, you know, you know, eight hundred thousand dollar ones that we can get dirt cheap. We could take care of all of our needs.
M-Dot's gonna sell some here when they get theirs in, maybe that we, we can go to the auction and buy one of their machines.
And then we wouldn't need to contract any.
Yeah. Well, you're gonna have to, you're gonna put the tape down. The tape down.
That's why I love the page, Jake. You asked a question. I, I just answered it for you.
All right, Mr. Harrison, I think you, the consensus of the board is that we're gonna wait on the, on the pressure. What else you got going on?
Uh, I got one more thing. Uh, I think y'all got it zapping in front of y'all. I don't know if y'all have a can to look at it, uh...
Beautifully colored copies. What does it all say? What's the most relevant? It's the five-year summary?
It's not ours, so it's, uh, it's kind of gonna come through if you, uh...
I was thinking, say, I don't recognize all these records.
It'll be finished out from what we, we started, and it's basically, we're gonna take our budget numbers, and we will, uh...
Name straight, so we're named that. If I look at the shape, I go, that's not Reagan County. I should have told us ahead of time, you know.
I said, I'm missing some roads.
What we paying the big bucks for, Mr. Schley?
So, I am going to add one, a little smaller, but in our contract...
Yeah, I bet you do.
On that, it'll be, uh, not exceed over twenty. I think it's gonna be about seventeen, and what it's gonna be, uh, not exceed over forty-five thousand dollars if we, you know, we go with this plan right here.
What did we?
This'll be the additional. This is something else that we...
Oh, in addition to the hundred and fifty, thirty, whatever we pay?
We were close finishing that up, but...
So, what, what were they going to give us of, of that study? What were they preparing?
Basically, it'll be brought down by road, what's supposed to be done. This here breaks it down, what you need to do, what's more pressing, you know, you need to...
That's what the whole thing was.
Like, on these roads, you need to reclaim these roads, kind of work your budget out throughout the year.
And I really hate to see lists thrown around here, you know, when you put lists out there, you know.
I don't know about, I don't wanna publish a list. I don't, I mean, if we have it, we can refer to it as our road plan, and if somebody wants to make a four-year request or something like that. But on, uh, the report that we got, that Mike showed me, uh, that we're paying for right now, I mean, it'll have point eight miles of a ten-mile road with this surface and point three miles. And then you go to this other page somewhere and find an asterisk of whatever, and it says, you know, give you a location of that point eight. And then, I mean, it, it almost, I'm not saying it doesn't put common sense, but if you're going down Holly Bush, I'm not gonna work a point eight mile with this product and something else, and something in point eight. This puts it all together. It's what, the way I understand it, and it has each road and how far and...
It'd be a little different, it's a twenty-mile road.
Well, uh, I couldn't break down, I mean, I, I guess I could sit there long enough, take two different bro, uh, booklets.
You had to build your own plan.
But why would they give us something that broke it down like that?
I, they give it to him to work with, and it does, I mean, if you build roads or whatever, I guess, it, you can go to the coordinates and find what point eight mile of this is getting this...
I, I know, but why would, why would we even, I mean, nobody can go to a point eight mile and point two mile, two...
Identify, just identify it on map. Here, and I've got a color code map that identifies different levels on the road.
I know, but I mean...
And points right there.
Jared's making a point, supplement, it's gonna tell him what roads we need to get done this year, prioritize what roads need to be done.
This year, next year.
That won't work.
We know, we know there's gonna be some roads with weather conditions, we'll go, we'll move ahead and, and do that, but...
After looking at the product we have and knowing what I'd like, uh, I think the product we have has less value. It's worth a whole lot more when you put the summary to it. And, and this would be our plan. To me, this would be what we would file legitimately, and somebody wants to come in and say, y'all have a plan, or where's your plan? I'm not, and I'm not talking about just your average citizen here. I'm talking about somebody else. Uh...
Yeah, when they pull that up and they see, uh, one through twenty, this is what we're supposed to be doing, and that number fifteen, uh, five, what'd they get done? They're gonna say, wait a minute.
That's no different now than when I tell them I'm wanting to work on Andrew Jappel, and it hadn't gotten done.
No, it is a lot of difference, really.
Just, just for clarity purposes, you would not be obligated on yourself to specific road improvement projects in a specific order.
It's hard to, it's hard to explain that to someone that looks at that and goes, I don't, that's all I'm saying.
I missed him.
You would, there would be questions raised as to why roads that were at a higher priority level are not being worked when a lower priority road is being worked. You would always have to deal with that, but that's no different than where you sit today.
I don't think, that's, I'd rather, I'd rather have a plan, and somebody asks me, why did y'all not get my road worked? And this looked like it was supposed to be the fifteenth road, and I know you're on number seventeen.
How much did we vote to go start this?
I'd rather be able to tell them.
One, what, fiftyish? One fifty, so we add another twenty to it. What's another twenty thousand? I said, what's another twenty thousand?
No, you said another...
I thought we just got a lecture on budget items a moment ago.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, uh, personally, I, you know, this is what our road manager thinks he needs to get the job done, so...
It just gotta, it just gotta help get the word laid out. It takes a lot of the guesswork out of it.
Just know that's twenty thousand of your budget. Where was that paint machine?
It's on Mike, it's on Mike.
We got to make some money.
Well, if somebody wants to make a motion, have at it. Let's hear it.
I make the most of it.
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All the favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I'm sorry, that's not at it. Uh, all right, motion to approve by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All the favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Harrison. One out of two is not bad.
One more quick thing. Uh, we do have a few, few road closures in the county. Uh, we get those out to y'all that are not major roads. Uh, depending on what this rain does, we're looking to monitor some fruit paths.
They seem to be stopping.
That could get out impacts and major roads, but we'll, we'll let y'all know if there's progress. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bishop, I think you wanted to bring something up?
Yes, sir. Acorn Drive. Uh, I just left there this morning and was very disappointed to find out, and I've already shared this with our engineers. Uh, I was highly...
Which one? There's four of them out there. Which one you want? And nobody's jumping up to come to the podium either, so, uh... All right, Tim, I guess you're on the hook. Come on. Oh, Mr. Bass? All right, Mr. Bass, come on.
Pass that buck.
We, we have AT&T customers out there right now that can't get service, because we have a sunken, uh, energy, uh, site or terminal, and it's unsafe for them to get to. So, therefore, there's a block of people not being able to... site or terminal, and it's unsafe for them to get to, so therefore there's a block of people not being able to get hooked up for AT&T. And we knew nothing about that, you know? It's not being addressed. On top of everything else, the gentleman, and, and just so y'all know, I asked, I sent an email, or a text message to the gentleman asking him to come to our meeting today, and told him we did not want to have any legal recourse. We wanted him to finish the road. And, and I'll be honest with you, man, I'm out of impasse here. It is ugly. It ain't gonna get no better. Um, if, if we call the bond, it's gonna be sixty days. And I'll be honest with you, I think he wants us to call the bond. But what I asked Buster to get with Tim is to find out, how many days can they have extension? And after that, how much is the amount of money that we're gonna charge? So where are we at?
Well, I mean, it's official time ran out on the fifteenth of December. He had, um, he did have some legitimate days where he couldn't work, it was out of his control, uh, he took gas line that they, they had to move. But, you know, he asked for additional time based on rain days, but it was a calendar day contract. And well, that would give him any additional days because there has been an excessive amount of rain this fall and early winter above normal. Um, you know, uh, I think, you know, probably, it was probably down fifteen days for the, uh, for the gas line. And then, you know, like I said, there's been a lot of, a lot of rain, but according to the contract, we wouldn't have to give him any days for the rain because it is a calendar day contract.
Well, if we wanna be generous and give him some rain days, how many days would he have?
Probably close to sixty days.
Sixty days from the fifteenth of December.
Right.
He's got nothing now. I mean, he could have worked anyway.
And, and so, a- at the end of that, how much are, what, what are the holdbacks?
I think they're two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
It's the liquidated damage.
Right.
Is that significant enough to be working as well?
Couple of things, Jay. There, there's been some limited communication with the owner of the company. Uh, the, the last word that we got is that there's at least an openness to meet and discuss. Uh, and there was some concern, obviously, about whether lawyers would be present. And so, really, you and I need to talk about how we move forward from that and address the suggestion that maybe a conversation can occur. I have some hope that, uh, that we can get a meeting with the contractor together, uh, and try to address some of these issues. I think at the end of the day, i- it's gonna, it, it's gonna be very, very hard for us to suggest that he's not entitled to some consideration with respect to rain days. Um, and e- even though the contract we could hold firm on, that's just a really difficult position.
Fair.
Correct.
Uh, but also, you know, we have a mess out there.
Yes, we do.
Now, we have mud piled on the streets. Even though we removed the cover, that was a public safety issue.
Correct.
Uh, we still have a, a mess out there. And if all the, if all the pipe has been laid on the road, I don't understand why it's not put into, eh, either hauled off or put into the whole one.
Correct.
The dirt, the mud, you're talking the dirt.
He's refusing to show it work. Uh, because he's trying to say that he's afraid he's gonna be thrown in jail and, you know, we showed up unannounced and disrupted their work. It's a total bunch of BS.
They're going out of the whole job.
And that's what it sounds to me like he's wanting out of the whole job. But, you know, the last time we had to call a bond, it didn't seem the contractor got the job.
That's right.
And I'll be dang, I ain't want that to happen.
That was Castle Woods, the community center.
So.
Yep.
That's why we don't like bonds. That's why we like letters of credit.
I mean.
I remember that. Nah, sure did.
Yeah.
I do not know what to have to do, you know, at this point.
We're gonna come up with something.
There is a no win situation. These people are gonna be in for another three to six months worth of crap.
That's right.
Uh, that should have already been finished.
That's right. And if I can say this, that is the case regardless, regardless of what decision you guys make with respect to how to deal with this. If we call the bond, we're at least sixty days from any activity happening, at least. If we ask him to get out there and get it finished, he may or may not, and we may be sixty days sitting here going, well, it doesn't look like he's gonna get it finished.
And then you start sixty days again.
Yes.
So Craig, if we, if we don't do anything except notify him of his time, this is how much time he's got after this. He's fixing to recharge this many days. It's up to him to take action at that point.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, to me, I would rather go that route because he's on the hook to get in there. I want him to either quit. You know, I don't wanna be seen as firing.
I don't want him to quit. I want him to finish the project.
Oh, absolutely. I want him to finish it, but I think he wants to quit.
How much have we paid him? Do we know?
Uh, we've, uh, we've paid him close to, at this point, to eight hundred thousand dollars.
One point eight million.
And his, um.
Eight hundred thousand?
Right, but you gotta remember that most of that, probably close to half a million, was just for the lining that Gulf State did.
The whole project was one point four, so.
Oh, one point eight.
He's got very little money left, and he's got a whole bunch of work left to do.
Oh, one point eight.
Now, he's got half of it left.
Right.
He's got about half the money.
Guys.
Hundred one point five six or something like that.
Let, let me jump in here. Since it's, it's, it's starting to take a turn towards litigation. I, I, I want us to sort of be careful about what we're talking about here, so.
Yeah, I would get some, one of these guys, and I would ask him to come in here and meet, a friendly meeting with our engineer and our.
Yes.
And.
No lawyers. No lawyers.
Nope, and we're just, we'll agree. You, you got sixty days, so you.
I did. I, I reached out to him two days ago, asked him to come to our meeting today.
No, I mean, we're not talking about a board meeting.
I wouldn't write a board meeting. Just you and me. I mean, just without attorneys or, I mean, now.
Well, he won't sit, he's not coming without an attorney now.
Oh, he's not?
Because what Chris told me, he's contacted his bonding company. So what Chris told me, he's contacted his bonding company, and his bonding company is telling him to take the advice of his attorney as to whether to show up to meet.
Well, I would.
So what does that tell you?
Let him come just sit there and be quiet.
It's up to him if he wants attorney, and just see if we can take the first step to heal, and at least we can say we tried. And you, all of you people that are out there that's suffering, you'll, you'll have tried to do something to move it forward.
If he's interested in continuing at all, then he'll come to a meeting.
I don't think he's interested in continuing.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying, that will say, that will tell you something too.
Well, we're not gonna arrest him. That's just a plea.
Well, meet, meet at his darn office.
I'm just saying that.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I'll go with that.
I, I don't think he has any interest in moving forward.
Well, at least we will have tried.
I think he's trying that.
All right, so, all right, sorry.
Well, if you don't vote, you don't try.
Chris, let me ask you this question here. Let's just say everything just comes to a standstill. What can we do for the residents over in Oak Grove right now as some kind of temporary patch fix? Resolve some issues that they've got until we can get this worked. Let's say this draws out and they don't do anything for sixty days to wait for the litigation. Did he call the bond sixty more days? What can we do from the county to immediately put a fix to the people in Oak Grove temporarily until we can get control? Because right now, we don't have control of the animals, the animals away from.
We could do, and, and I was curious if we have this capability. Man, there's all this dirt that's piled up in the middle of the road. Can we remove that dirt?
It's mud.
Mud, yeah.
It's in our road. It's in our road.
I mean, I know it's their material for their project. It may be good material, it may be bad, but.
If it's wet, it's not any good going there now.
Clean it up.
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking. We need some kind of.
Some of the, you know.
For the residents. So can, can you come up with some kind of plan, rough plan, idea to do as a temporary fix? Let's just say this kind of, this goes rogue on us again and doesn't come back in. What can we do right now to get it livable? For the people, because we got mailboxes and five-gallon paint buckets.
But within his contract, I'm afraid he's gonna say, if we touch anything on that project, we're voiding the contract.
But, but we've, we've voided the contract before. I mean, at this point, we're way off what the contract says, right?
That's why you need to have a meeting with them.
I mean, he voided it. No, but he has.
Yeah.
So, but my point is, we need to do something for the residents of Oak Grove to give them some temporary living until we can get control of the animals that's gotten away.
I just don't give him over an inch.
Well, there is no, I mean, I don't think there is enough money right now. I mean, he's destroyed Oak Grove. So I guess.
See, you set a meeting up at his office.
Do you have a suggestion on that, Chris?
I mean, just clean it up and just maintain the driveways.
Would be huge, because people can't even get in their driveways.
Till next week.
Well, I mean, we're.
You know? He don't want a week to, he don't, he don't want to meet until next week.
Well, tomorrow.
Jay.
Tomorrow Friday.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Well, I, I contacted him Monday.
Jay, what, what's your thoughts of them going out and doing some temporary driveway fixes and just clean the area?
We've done that. We've been doing that.
But, but, I know, but we still got them. I mean, it's, it's a.
Constant rain.
I know.
How hard do you think, whether the mud is, it is raining right now?
But I'm curious, Mr. Attorney, if we remove that dirt, are we going to put ourselves in a bad light?
Possibly, possibly. If it's his material, it's part of the project. Yes, sir.
Okay.
You're so close to getting past the holidays, and then after that, if he don't want to meet with us, he don't want to meet with us, so.
I would, I would set a meeting up, and if he don't want to come here, go to his office, or his place somewhere.
I just, I just think in the middle of all this, we need Mike's crew, Chris out there, to do some kind of temporary Band-Aid for the folks living there just to get through it.
We have, man, we.
I, I know, I know we have. I mean, just continue to do that. I know, I know. I just think it's important.
We're running our brush out there still, I guess, Mike, uh, whenever we can, try to get as clean as possible. But until all that frickin' mud's out of the road, Daniel?
Oh, I know, I know, I know, I know it's bad. I'm just saying, while we're winning these negotiations or whatever you wanna call it, deliberations, I guess is probably what we're in, but.
Somebody needs to get in touch with energy to fix that situation. We should have known about this a long time ago to get this fixed and.
Probably right now, it's so, so wet and muddy.
But Chris, I, I know, I know we've been doing it, but if you and Mike could get together and just make some serious drive, there's nothing you're not doing it already. For us to do some kind of temporary, I don't care what it is, to get the driveways right, I mean, halfway cleaned up to where they can live.
I don't know if we would make a bigger mess.
Yeah, well, if.
Get in there now.
Sixteen in the driveway. Man, dude, you gotta see some crap, man.
I'm saying, I don't know if we, we're gonna make, with it saturated, or we gonna make free.
Well, I think you got about, you got about seven days of dry weather coming up. Once this, once this blows through tonight.
Sixteen, how about, but Jared, you need to go look at it, because literally, man, like, right beside somebody's driveway is a sinkhole where they gotta put a box in. And so you got a six-foot drop.
What can we do about that?
Nothing.
I mean, we can't do anything about sinkhole.
No, no, but there's several areas where some sixteen would help to make things a little more passable.
Yeah.
I mean, until, until they get it worked out. I mean, we, we gotta take a priority on that. If you're all right with that, I mean, it's your, it's your area, but.
I.
That's what I would suggest.
I'm kind of having a fit. Well, I called Buster yesterday. I'm at loss, you know, uh, how to deal with this situation.
I don't, until you can either have a meeting with him or him say, I'm not meeting with you. I think that you're getting ahead of yourself.
I, I think any option that, that does not include having a sit-down with this joker, any option that doesn't include that is a, a complete waste of time.
Yep.
Until we get an audience and figure out how, if at all, we could get it resolved.
No way there's gonna be an audience without you there.
I understand that.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna be out of town for a week, so, uh.
I'll go.
Yeah, I don't, at this point, I don't think that there's going to be a meeting without this gentleman bringing his lawyer.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think.
Nobody from this board is going to meet without legal counsel present.
What I think you ought to do, though, is have the, have the attorneys, but y'all don't jump in.
Mr. Dalloway.
Let y'all try to work it out.
Well, Chris and Mike have a plan, uh, and, and the plan is, they think they got all the line done, all the way down Acorn, okay?
Hey, Jay, we, we've got a plan that we wanna talk, we, yep, yep. We've got a plan that we wanna talk about. That is a viable option to get us all out of the ditch, literally. So, let's explore that. I, my hope was that that could happen without lawyers present.
Right.
Because it's just gonna complicate things for the lawyers to be involved.
Yeah, I'm gonna be.
But we've got an option.
I'm not gonna be here at our next meetings.
I'll go. I'll do, set the date, I'll go.
Okay. Well, we will work diligently to try to get an audience with this guy, lawyers or not, and Daniel will be our spokesman.
If you can give me a reach-out number, I'll call.
We got that. Any further questions about Oak Grove?
All right.
All right, Mr. Cross, I believe you want to bring up the courthouse up there?
Yeah, I wanted to have the discussion on where we're at on the removal of the, uh, I don't, I don't wanna say it's debris or cars or motor homes or whatever's down there. Uh, take me back.
Where, where did we leave this? We who's calling and setting up the meeting?
We're gonna work on getting that meeting together. We're gonna let the engineers try to get in touch with gentlemen. Daniel's agreed to be our spokesman. We work to get that meeting set as soon as possible, good.
All right. Mr. Ward, would you like some time on the bench?
I got one more, one more thing, Jack.
Yes, sir.
I meant to bring it up. Jake called me.
Which I will say, Mike, I want to appreciate you and your guys tremendously for all the work y'all did during those two days right before Christmas.
I understand.
Those people out there were, you know.
It's still a mess and, and, but it's best wait till next week and let the sunshine come out before we don't make a better one.
About seven days of dry weather after this last rain debacle.
I wanted to update y'all on the state aid thing. Mr. Buster, not trying to take nothing away from you and Tim, but Jake had called me this morning on this. Uh, we're, striping guy contacted, uh, yesterday. Uh, Jake with Keys with Engineering Service about that he had, he was about seven to eight days behind on his striping. As soon as he got that done, he would get, he would get to the state aid part.
Sixty days.
Uh, that's why we're stocking in striping, and Tim will help me out if I leave anything out right here. That it has to be fifty-five and rising to strike. So we all know what kind of weather we're getting into. They are getting, they are getting pressed on liquidated damages right now, so.
Yes, they already under.
So, but that's what I'm saying, the only time a day counts, a workday has got to be a certain temperature.
We've had a bunch of workdays.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he's.
Yeah.
He's on up in thousands right now.
Now, who knows when now that, well, wait, but you're saying, so he won't get charged if it's not fifty-five and above?
That's correct.
Well, wait a minute. Yeah, but he, he's already been through, uh, thirty days or more of pretty weather. They didn't do anything.
And those days were charged against a contract. But on, but on a, uh, on a contract like that, you only charge the days where they can do the best.
We don't get that done spring.
You know, the, the payment contract pulled off for a month too, if you remember.
It'd be, it'd be spring.
So anyway, I just wanted to give y'all a heads up that, I mean, I, I agree with you, Jared. I mean, I think the reality, we're looking in, in the March of getting the striping. Striping and the signage finished up on these state aid roads.
At least we got temporary.
But we are in ALD with them. I wanted to let y'all know that. Jake wanted me to pass that on to y'all. Keep you informed on that. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mike.
That you were looking at for secondary.
That's right, Mr. Slade.
Daniel, can I have, do you mind if I ask for you guys to help us?
Uh, given, given the situation with the weather, and it is changing rapidly, it's going downhill fast. Uh, the suggestions made since we're in session right now, uh, why don't we go ahead and authorize the board president to, uh, execute a request for a disaster declaration from the state, so that if it is required, we have the, the, what's called DR one, ready to present. That's a part of the request. It would have to be in hand, otherwise we can't make it.
Motion by Mr. Bishop to add it to the agenda, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
The agenda item would be authority of the board president to execute all appropriate doc- documentation associated with a disaster declaration request.
That motion that Mr. Slade just referred to, motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion has passed. You still want to go back to the courthouse, Mr. Cross?
I would just like a quick update on, I know y'all met before Christmas, after Christmas, sometime in that timeframe on, uh.
Mr. Slade, you want to bring up a date?
We, whatever it is we've got buried down below, and, and update on the accuracy of it?
Yes, thank you, Daniel. Uh, the, the, uh, again, the, the quick issue for other folks in the room is that, uh, a discover, uh, a, a, a discovery, the significance of a discovery was made with respect to debris located underneath the area that is planned for parking at the new courthouse. Uh, this would be in the southeast corner. be in the southeast corner of our site, was made, it was, there were, there was debris unearthed, that debris was random car parts, large chunks of concrete and other spoil type material, stumps, vegetative debris, organic material. And the, the architects stopped any work in that area and requested that a geotech come forward and evaluate the situation. So it wasn't the contractor that, they, they may have been working together in concert, but it was the call of the architect to get the geotech there. The geotech came, our engineer, Tim, I'm gonna let Tim speak, if there's anything I might line on, you let me know. At any rate, we were aware, we were made aware of the situation, and we got eyeballs on the situation. There was, uh, there was a discussion, a high level discussion, engineers about.
High level?
Uh, well above my level, put it that way. Uh, trying to determine what are the options that we might have that are cost effective. Obviously, the situation is this, the contractor's in a situation where he's gotta present a building that functions and works, all right? So nobody wants a sinkhole in a parking lot, that's not a good outcome. Uh, and so that, that really put a, a burden on us, trying to figure out how do we resolve this. So the decision was made, have the contractor do a takeoff on the cost associated with getting that debris out of there to a level that was satisfactory to the geotech. The discussions among the engineers was, hey, there's many ways that we can deal with this situation, and some are better than others, some are more cost effective than others, but the, ultimately, the decision's made by the geotech, who has to sign off on it, we gotta go to twelve feet. All right, so the, so the contractor did a takeoff on that. You guys saw and approved the, the work on, you didn't, somebody did, uh, but, uh, majority of the board approved it, let's put it that way, thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay.
Two sixty is the number I want you to think about.
I believe you were with me.
So the cost was two sixty. We, 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 a, a group was pulled together, Steve, Bob met, Tim, myself, Ms. Laura was involved, with the contractor directly, and Carl Franco, the architect. We came together to, to really talk out, hey, do we have other viable options? Are there ways that we can shave some of these costs off? That's, that was the purpose of the discussion. Where we ended up at the end of the day was that we discovered during the course of that conversation, Daniel, that, that, that there may be some options to save some money. One of them, we've already taken advantage of. One of the costs associated with the work was trip fee, transportation costs and site disposal costs associated with the debris. You know, you can't just put spoil material anywhere you wanna put it. And so we, we came up with a way to absorb some of those costs. We think that we're gonna save somewhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars, just by that. We, we have some arrangements that can be made that will work for everybody, contractor, us, and everybody. So we've handled that part of it. There was also a discussion, again, that at some point, as the excavation is taking place, that there may be, that what we may find is that the material and the dirt is not as bad as we are assuming, okay? So the contractor was at least hopeful that as we go to excavating, we may get to eight feet and discover, hey, we're good. And if the geotech, who will be there watching, says, yeah, you're good, then we're not gonna be excavating the remaining full foot depth, we'll stop there and move forward.
Yes, my, my follow up to that was, can we have one of our guys, engineer guys, there at the point of the excavation? I mean, just, is that a doable thing, Tim?
Yeah, I want you guys.
My thought was, why don't we just go out there and grade it off and start pouring some asphalt, because in five years, it's our baby anyway.
I, I voted with you, Big Daddy, I voted with you.
I mean, I think it's senseless money.
We'd have shut it down, that day, the whole project would be shut down.
Well, it's senseless money, we're throwing money away doing this.
Yeah, unfortunately, you, we have no method, again, just like Oak Grove, Jay, we don't have an ability.
Reopening Oak Grove, if we went in the middle of this contract, said we're taking a.
Yep, we're taking this part of it out of the deal.
They don't have to warranty the, the.
I know they don't, but they could say contract's done.
Well, they actually.
You're in here on me now.
They actually are going to warranty it if they follow the geotech's advice. So what, Daniel? For, for the full warranty period, it's under the contract, I, I don't know what that is.
For the rainy days?
No.
That's the problem.
At least one year.
If we try pulling there and do what you're saying, it costs us way more than a hundred thousand, a hundred sixty thousand.
We're right in the Oak Grove.
Because they're gonna shut it down.
I just don't, I just don't.
All right, guys, hey, 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 come on, let's stay on focus.
I just want our guys, stay with them.
Come on.
Daniel's, to Daniel's point.
If you voted to shut it down, the project shut down.
I get it, I get it.
All right, let's get Mr. Slade, our divided attention, please.
Yeah, so, to Daniel's point, we, Daniel wants our, a set of eyes that are obligated to regulate the county to be present to say, hey, y'all ought to think about stopping here.
That's what I want.
Okay, and that's fine, but if they say we stop here, then, you're breaching that contract.
When, when, I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna say Tim, because he's the only one out of their crew that I know, but it'll be somebody that actually knows something about it.
I would, I would like to know what they come up, I mean, watch them, and I would like them to report back to us, so that in the future, when we let another contract, and these guys come in, right now, I think we're flush, we're even. They found a problem, and there's a solution to fix it, but if we can get in there, and we don't have to go twelve foot, and, and these guys say, look, this ground is good, and let's, and they keep pushing us, then maybe we need to re, rethink our position on that in the future.
Correct, I agree, I agree. So, the, let's let the engineers talk and discuss as the pro, as the process is unfolding, and it could be that we're gonna end up saving a significant amount of money. But the less depth we gotta go down, obviously, the less gotta be removed, the less delay you're gonna have, the, the better. And, and that leads to the next point that I think you guys need to hear, is that there was a, a good bit of discussion about delay, and, and it, it came to light, a, a better understanding, much of the area where they're having to conduct the excavation is lay down area for their inside material, and, uh, based on what I heard, it became very obvious that the contractor is trying to be frank and honest when he says that this is going to significantly delay the completion of the project. He's trying to be honest about that, and he's presented facts that suggest there's some legitimacy to the reason why there would be delay. Now, I'm gonna let Bob and Steve, who heard it, that presentation, but, but he has not, he hasn't said that the sixty days that we have provided is adequate or not, am I right?
Is it twenty-one?
Forty-five?
Yeah, my bad, my bad, my bad.
He agreed to the twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I got Oak Grove mixed up with this.
But he did say that, that probably would not be.
He said the twenty-one that you authorized would not be sufficient.
Right.
To handle this, and he was pointing to this weather that we're now experiencing. If, if we had a twelve foot hole out there right now.
Yep.
You're probably talking about a week to get it, to get it pumped, so.
Well, the first thing that brought, I think, our attention really strongly in was the car parts, and then, and then like Jared and Jay, well, everybody's, the car part, that's not really a bad soil, I mean, if you pull it out, or if you leave it in there, it's not gonna sink and cause a void. And that was the main gist of what they had found it. There was fender and maybe some other car parts, and maybe a chunk of rock or something that still for parking lot. When, when we got in here now, and we were third of the way through the meeting, and I was getting heated up, and saying, I don't think, you know, they found a car part back in the middle of summer, and nobody raised an issue. And the guy goes, well, car part aren't an issue. I said, what do you mean? I said, the car, he said, yeah, they probably did, I don't, I didn't even know they pulled one out. But when we got down in there, it was some really bad, bad soil, and they called it, I mean, I'm not an engineer, did they call that debris? I mean, is it, does, is bad soil, could it be called debris?
No, I think what, what they, what the contractor said is exactly what you said. He said, we called the geotech in because we had bad soil, and we couldn't build a parking lot. And when they start drilling, then they find what they're calling the debris.
Okay, but anyhow, it.
But it wasn't.
I think Carl had maybe some, maybe not all of the information whenever he addressed